Good evening, everybody. Can the people in the back hear me? My name is Mayor Mike Concanon. I welcome everybody to tonight's public hearing. This is a bit of a different type of public hearing than you're probably used to. And I'm gonna, in a minute, I'm gonna let Planning Director John Cashell explain the process and the particularities of the law that brings us here for this type of public hearing. But in a nutshell, we're talking about the very first steps in a process that would lead to a potential zoning amendment and the creation of a special type of overlay district that allows for a development in the downtown area. So tonight, you're gonna hear from, again, Director Cashell, who's gonna talk about the law and, you know, what steps need to be followed for something like this to happen. And then you're gonna hear from the property owner in the area that we're talking about, and they're gonna share with us their ideas for what they'd like to see happen if this type of overlay district was approved. So what you'll hear a lot about is Mass. General Law Chapter 40R. A lot of people have heard about Chapter 40B. This is, you know, obviously similar, but a little bit different. And what makes this unique is this requirement that at the very beginning of the process, we have this type of first-step public hearing, where we hear from the public, obviously we hear from the petitioner or the eventual petitioner, and we get a chance to receive feedback from the public at this very beginning stage. There are additional public hearings and opportunities to be heard later on as per the usual process between, at the Planning Board and the City Council. But again, this is Step 1A. So that's the context, that's the background of why we're here tonight, what it is we're gonna be hearing about. And we do welcome the feedback of those here, as well as those who are watching this, because the idea is to make this the very best outcome at the end of the day. So with that, I would ask our Planning Director, John Cashell, to come up and give us a little additional background. Thank you, John.
Good evening, everyone. John Cashell, Planning Director, really the first order of business, and sorry about this, this is kind of dry, but I have to read the public hearing notice for this hearing. So I'll do that real quick and then get into a somewhat of a presentation. The purpose of this preliminary public hearing is to present and hear testimony and comment from interested persons relative to the proposed creation of a new zoning ordinance and amendment of the zoning map for the city of Woburn as follows. Number one, amend the zoning ordinances to establish a new zoning ordinance overlay district entitled Smart Growth Overlay District (SGOD), under the provisions of the Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40R and 760 CMR Code of Massachusetts Regulations. Continues, 59, Department of Housing and Community Development's Smart Growth Overlay District. The Department of Housing and Community Development is now the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. Developments undertaken within the proposed SGOD would be subject to special site and building design standards, parking and dimensional controls, and affordability requirements. Number two, amend, part of this hearing is to present an amendment to the zoning map of the city of Woburn such that the property located at 14 and 14R Federal Street, listed as map, block, and lot number on the town, the city's assessing map, it would be map 51, block 1, and lot 05. And the second lot being on map 51, block 1, and lot 4. On the city's assessors' maps, be rezoned from business downtown to SGOD, Smart Growth Overlay District. Following this public hearing, a proposed zoning ordinance amendment and zoning map amendment will be submitted to the City Council for consideration at a future public hearing and to the Planning Board for review and vote of its recommendation and report back to the City Council. Copies of these materials, once we do get into the public hearing process with the City Council and the Planning Board, they will be available on the city's website. So everyone will have a chance to look at those materials as we go forward with the public hearing process after tonight's hearing. Just real quickly, Smart Growth Overlay District, really what does that mean? What is the purpose for it? I just want to read some bullet points in regard to that. The general regulations that apply to all Smart Growth Overlay Districts: to encourage smart growth in accordance with the purposes of Mass. General Law 40R; to provide an opportunity for residential and mixed-use development within a distinctive, attractive, and livable environment in the city of Woburn; to promote development and redevelopment in the city that is pedestrian-friendly; to ensure high-quality site planning, architecture, and landscape design that enhances the distinct visual character and identity of the city, and provides an environment with safety, convenience, and amenity. Number five, to provide for a diversified housing stock at a variety of costs within walking distance of services, employment opportunities, and public transportation, including affordable housing and other housing types that meet the needs of the city's population. Number six, to generate positive tax revenue for the city to the extent consistent with Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40R, and to benefit from the financial incentives provided by Mass. General Law Chapter 40R while providing the opportunity for new business growth and additional local jobs. Number seven, to promote efficient use of land and existing parking supply and limit the expansion of surface parking within the district by encouraging shared parking. Number eight, and finally, to encourage adoption of energy-efficient building practices and sustainable construction methods. So those are the bullet points having to do with Chapter 40R. And the overall goal, to simplify everything, is to try to create more affordable housing within the city of Woburn. And 40R applies to all Massachusetts cities and towns. And most cities and towns at this point in time do have 40R projects, and they've been successfully developed and they're occupied by persons needing housing. And Woburn 40R housing developments provide for 20% affordable units out of the 100%. So if anybody has any questions on that part of it, other than that, I'll hand it over to the petitioner, Attorney Joseph Tarby.
Okay, thank you, John. The applicant in this matter is Jamison Properties. With me is Bob Jamison, Peter Jamison, David Jamison, Glenn Morris, who's our architect. And this is a third-generation Woburn business, okay? Mr. Jamison started his business in 1969 of managing, owning, renting residential properties in the city of Woburn, one of the oldest businesses in the city. So the proposal here involves property across the street next to the post office at 14 Federal Street. Currently, there are 13 residential units on the property. In 2021, there was a fire that damaged, was it one of the buildings, one of the buildings, which has not been occupied since that time. And the goal here is to create an overlay district that would include that property under 40R. So back in 2017, the city of Woburn adopted a housing plan, it's called the Woburn Housing Production Plan, and it did identify certain properties, including this one, for housing in downtown Woburn. So over the past few years, we've spent significant amount of time working with Tom Quinn, Building Commissioner, Tina Cassidy, Planning Director, subsequently John Cashell, Planning Director, to finalize a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance, the Smart Growth section, to allow for this property. So the Smart Growth Overlay District was adopted in 2019 when the Woburn Mall was being developed into Woburn Village. So there was the basic ordinance, there was section, let's call it 1, for Woburn Village, and this now will be section 2 for 14 Federal Street. So what I'd like to do before I turn it over to Glenn, show you the PowerPoint presentation, is just to run generally through the ordinance. So this would only apply to the property at 14 Federal Street. The uses that would be allowed on the site are multifamily dwelling and a property management office. The property management office being that of the Jamisons that are currently operating at 627 Main Street, they would move their management office into approximately 1,200 square feet at 14 Federal Street. There would be a maximum number of 30 units with all parking on-site on, in two floors of a garage. The units, I believe, John, I think it was 25%, I think it was affordable on that, that would be eight affordable units. The ordinance also addresses signage on the building, which is very minimal, along with loading and access into the building. So it's a pretty, pretty basic amendment to the ordinance, and, you know, we're hoping that this is gonna go forward and finally adopted. So with that, I turn it over to Glenn, who'll take you through the PowerPoint.
Excuse me for turning my back to you all. By the way, the first picture here is actually the front of 40 Montvale, which was developed by the Jamisons, in which we also were the architect. And the flavor of the two buildings will be fairly similar. Guess I'm not fast enough. There we go. This shows the location of the site, it's basically two blocks from City Hall.
I'm just gonna listen. Is they recording?
Ah, there we go. Rational, rationale for 40R. Residential development near existing transportation lines is part of the requirements of 40R. Residential development in already built-up downtowns helps to support new and existing businesses. Residential development that are primarily... Residential development that are primarily business or government, it allows for a denser, walkable community.
I think if you just go forward with your...
Yeah.
...your reading of the slides, we can catch up when this is...
Sounds good. This is a map showing priority sites from the Woburn Housing Production Plan. I won't read this, we can have PDF copies of everything made available. These are some quotes from Jeff Speck, who's an expert on walkable cities and makes some very good arguments in favor of walkable cities. This next slide talks about micro-units from Magno Chakrabadi from WBUR about the need for micro-units.
I'm just gonna...
You wanna try that?
I'm gonna try and put you in slideshow mode, sometimes that'll help keep your connection...
Ah, there you go.
Karen, I gotta learn your computer, but I think I'm getting it. Try that.
All right. There's a need, in fact, you hear about it all the time, you read about it in the press all the time, the need for smaller units, for young people, for older people, and for people who are visiting the area, working with companies on a five-month, six-month basis. These are bus routes. What it shows is that from Woburn Center, there are convenient bus routes to shopping, both at the mall and the Winchester Line for Stop &amp; Shop, I think it is, and for Whole Foods, which is over near the, sort of on the road to Mahoney's, is the way I look at it. I'm gonna skip down to the plans so that we can...
If we're a small group, so if you just wanna present on your computer and not on the big screen, because it'll be more stable for you?
Sure.
That's easier for you.
Can all see this? Can you?
As well as the screen flashing.
Let's go to the next slide. That was a mistake. There we go. These are a bunch of projects, mostly in Watertown and Walthing, that show the flavor of the type of building we're proposing. As I said, the comparable project in terms of flavor is the 44 Montvale Project, although we will there be having, there's some stucco material there... What it shows is that from Woburn Center, there are convenient bus routes to shopping, both at the mall and the Winchester Line for Stop &amp; Shop, I think it is, and for Whole Foods, which is over near the, sort of on the road to Mahoney's, is the way I look at it. I'm gonna skip down to the plans so that we can...
If we're a small group, so if you just wanna present on your computer and not on the big screen, because it'll be more stable for you?
Sure.
If that's easier for you.
Can all see this? Can you?
As well as the screen flashing.
Let's go to the next slide. That was a mistake. There we go. These are a bunch of projects, mostly in Watertown and Waltham, that show the flavor of the type of building we're proposing. As I said, the comparable project in terms of flavor is the 44 Montvale Project, although we will there be having, there's some stucco material there. This will have more of a clavate look where the stucco is, but it'll also be a fair amount of brick. This talks about the incentive program from the state. This isn't cooperating, but well, listen. The state, upon the approval of the district, the state will pay the city of Woburn a lump sum of $75,000 and will pay a density bonus at $3,000 per unit showing for anything over what is available currently. So, the net over the 13 to the 30 is 17, and that times 3,000 is how we got that particular These are the two levels of the garage. There is no internal ramp within the garage, so because of the slope of the land between Abbott Street and Federal Street, we're able to get one entry to the garage entering from Federal Street and one from Abbott Street, and it makes it a much more efficient garage. And as Joe said, we have 49 parking spaces in that garage, including handicap spaces and a truck loading area. Also, on the second floor of the garage is where the Jamison Properties offices will This shows the two... Let's see if we can get that big again. Shows the two residential floor plans. There are a total of 10 studio apartments and 21-bedroom apartments, which is very similar to the mix that we had at Federal Street. On the lower level of the, those two residential floors, there will be also a workout room. It won't be staffed, but there'll be equipment in there. And then the top floor actually steps back from the two lower floors, so we create a couple of decks on top of the second floor, accessible from the third floor. So, here again, you see the style of the building. This is a rendering from Abbott Street, and this is the most interesting part, I think. Here we go. A flyby. This was a special request from Bob Jamison. You can see the post office, call it in front of our building, and I think the most significant piece is actually the auto dealership, which is on the backside of the building. So, basically, that's it.
I just want to review the parking. So, the number of required parking spaces onsite for the residential units of 40 parking spaces, 45 parking spaces, and under the Smart Growth District is one spot required for the office, management office. So, that leaves three spaces technically open. Now, in reality, when you look at 44 Montville Avenue, that has 11 studios and 34 one-bedrooms. Currently, there's an average of 1.12 people living in each apartment with an average of .91 vehicles per apartment. So, based on those averages, 14 Federal Street would need 27.3 parking spaces to provide adequate parking for Jamison's business model, and we're providing 49 spaces in the two-story garage. So, I just wanted to make that clear. Okay? Thank you. So, I guess if anyone has any questions, one of us can answer them.
So, that was a little bit glitchy, unfortunately, but I think what'll happen is when this meeting is broadcast, we will have been able to provide a copy of the PowerPoint, and perhaps they can attach it.
Jen, who is listening in the other room, I'm sure will be able to take images of the PowerPoint. She might not be able to time it directly with the...
Yeah.
But it'll be available, it'll be available for download. So, anybody watching the live broadcast will be able to access it.
We can send you a PDF of that PowerPoint.
Check.
Put on the site.
Yeah, we were planning to electronically file it.
Yeah.
Copy of this as well.
And Jen is magical. She'll somehow make it all work.
So, at this point, just to recap, you know, we're having an initial public hearing, so there is an opportunity for members to speak, members of the public. Anyone have any questions, comments? Certainly feel free to come on up. If it was just information gathering, that's fine, too. There's really only a few people in the room tonight, so I'll look at each of you and say, do you have any questions or any comments you'd like to make at this point?
Do I have to do like the name of the person?
Yes.
Yes, please.
I'm Sasha from 13 Bennett Street. I guess my main comment is I...
I know this has been a really technically itchy thing, I'm sorry.
I read about the 40R law online, and it seems like a pretty good way to balance the costs and benefits of development, especially since Woburn gets money out of it. I guess my only concern about this project is that we're doing this parcel by parcel at the behest of the landowner. And I guess there are a lot of parcels I can think of in Woburn Center that are underutilized, and I would be more curious to see a city-wide plan for, do we want other Smart Growth Overlay districts? What if two weeks from now, another property owner comes forward wanting a Smart Growth Overlay District? Like, are we gonna have these hearings every few weeks, you know? So, I would like to, yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to answer that.
Should I have a microphone? Thank you.
For the record, John Cashel, Planning Director. Great question. We are actually in the midst of applying for a grant, a state grant, so that we can create a new master plan for downtown. So, yes, this is an application for one particular property. You know, the applicant has been working with the city for a number of years on this, so this has been fine-tuned and critiqued by the council, I believe, pretty extensively, the planning board. I was reading through the decision of the board a couple of years ago, and through all of that work, this final product of application has come in. So, you know, yes, is it part of the downtown area? Yes, it's a little bit away from the actual downtown, but it'll probably be included as an area within this master plan that we're planning to go forward with once we secure funding, if we're lucky enough to get that particular grant.
I'm short, so I'm gonna bring this down a little bit. For the record, I'm Samantha Stone. I head up Community Relations in the mayor's office. I also live in Woburn on Kilby Street, and I just want to say, because I think it's really important when we look at projects like this, we talk a lot about affordability in a lot of projects. Jamison Properties are actually affordable properties. I want to thank you, because I think it's really important for us as we're considering things like this. The studio and the one-bedrooms, you have a history of working with our residents here and providing them places that are, you know, truly places that are within reach for many people where other properties are not. And so, I just wanted to mention that, because I think as we're looking at something like this, when we say the word "affordable," sometimes that means different things to different people, and it certainly means something different legally, but you've done a lot of really incredible work here, and we have lots of people who come through the mayor's office, and Jamison is always here to help us, so thank you for doing that.
Just to follow up on Sasha's question, in my time on the city council, I saw a lot of really good ideas that were prompted by a particular petitioner. So, I agree with what you're saying, that, you know, do we really want to be here every few weeks, adding and adding and adding till we have a section, you know, 27 instead of just one? No. But usually, these things are prompted by somebody who has an idea, and they bring it to the city. So, I think it's okay to take them as they come while we continue to look long-term and see if there's a larger, you know, broader strategy to put in place. But it's a good question. I've asked it myself from the chairs up there when I was on the council. Any other comments or questions?
Oh, thank you.
All right. For the record, Christopher Sylvia, 13 Bennett Street. I did just, can we ask questions, or do we have to submit just statements?
You can ask.
Okay. Is the building up to the lot line? Is that how it's...
The building is to the lot line on the auto dealership side. It is set back from the lot line. It varies because of the line is skewed.
Gotcha.
On the side where the entry is and the new walkway from Oxford Street to Federal Street is.
Oh, I was not aware of that. And what's the height overall?
I believe it's 47 and a half feet.
Okay.
Including the garage.
Is that about the same height as the post office building, or is it gonna be taller than that?
It's a little higher than the post office building. I think it's basically one story higher.
Gotcha. And the number of story, what is the number of overall stories?
Five.
Five stories. Does that include the parking, or...
Yeah, two stories of parking and three stories of residential.
Yeah. And what happens to the parking spaces on Abbott Street? I mean, perfectly honest, I had thought that that was the library parking lot. I did not realize that it was actually a named street until now, so...
I think a lot of people are confused by that. There are, I believe, three parking spaces that would be hopefully relocated with a restriping of the lot, which our engineer will do for the city.
Gotcha. Yeah, I mean, where I sit, I just think that that parking sits empty almost all of the year, except for when they have the fireworks and the Blues Festival, so, you know, I don't think there's a problem there personally. And I guess the last question I have is about fire safety. I know that this is a, this came up on this property, so I'm just curious what the plan is for...
It's a fully sprinkled building.
Fully sprinkled.
With smoke alarms and carbon monoxide detectors. The construction itself is not quite fireproof, but fire resistant. It's metal stud framing, some wood framing for the structure itself above the garage. The garage is non-flammable.
Gotcha. Are the affordable units going to be all studio units, or is there gonna be...
There'll be mixed.
A mix, gotcha. Do you know what the mix is, or...
I don't.
Okay, gotcha. I think that's, that's all I got. I mean, the only thing I can think of is about mixed use, but I'm not gonna tell you how to build your own property.
We actually have looked at mixed use. The problem is getting the parking, you really want the, if you want retail use, you want it on the first floor.
Yeah.
And the problem with that is then you have the parking on the second and third floor. What's often done in 40R districts is they use, let's say, half of the first floor for parking and the other half for retail, when you get small retail spaces. The problem with that, with this, is that we'd end up with so few parking spaces, it just didn't make sense.
Gotcha.
So, we looked at and liked the idea of doing retail on that floor. It's also a little bit off of the core of the center.
It is. It is. All right, well, thank you.
You're welcome. President Dillon.
How are you tonight, Mayor Concan?
Very well.
Jeff Dillon, president of Woburn City Council, Ward Three City Councilor. This is also in my ward. So, the reason I let you go first, Chris, you took care of some of my questions, so thank you. If we've learned nothing from previous developments, seems the residents of Woburn love brick. So, bear that in mind as we go forward. I saw some of the pictures, and it appears there's a fair amount of brick, but you may find it like even more. So, that may be something you want to look at. The positives, in my opinion, on this is that all the parking's being taken care of onsite, so there's no municipal lots parking being taken, which is quite frequently with the previous developments that we're seeing lately. So, that's a big plus. The other, all one-bedrooms and studios. So, I'll ask the question, because we have a little history to go with here, where you folks already have that business brought up in the city. On your building over by the Bowlerdome, I'm old, so I'll call it the Bowlerdome, it still is, that building, any kids in that building? Any children, school?
Somebody who...
So, that was my next point. Not that we don't like kids, but every new development that comes in that's two and three bedrooms taxes our schools, and we're already in a situation where we're overcrowded in some of our schools. So, that's another positive that I like about this. And probably the most important positive here, I'll speak about briefly, is the Jamisons have a track record in the history in the city of Woburn. They not only live in the city, but they've had properties here for years, and their reputation stands for themselves. So, I'm gonna keep an open mind, and from what I can see here, I'm encouraged what I see, and I'm sure we'll have more feedback from residents as we proceed. And I like this format. Maybe we can do this more. So, that's all I have, but thank you.
Thanks, Derek. Any other questions or comments? Okay, John?
Yeah, I just have one more comment. I just want...
So, they can hear.
Yeah, I just want everybody that's listening and watching to realize this is the first initial hearing about this overlay district. There will be full planning board public hearings on this, and I don't think it'll be a one-night affair for the planning board. But there's also going to be in the future a full public hearing process in front of the city council. I'm sure that'll go to Special Permits Committee. So, there will be plenty of opportunity for the public to engage in this process and provide input to city officials that will be making the decision on the project.
It's a great point, John. Yeah, this is, you know, in a typical situation when you have a proposed development, it would start at the city council, be sent to the planning board for a public hearing and comment and recommendation, back to the council for their public hearing in committee, lot of opportunity to be heard. That's normally where it would start. Because of the uniqueness of this type of provision, this 40R category, we start with this, a one-off public hearing to try to just gauge the feedback and expose people to it before this project and this petition and this idea gets put into the process. So, plenty more opportunity for people to come down and hear more about it and express their opinions and their comments and their suggestions. So, this is really step 1A. So, with that, is there anything else that anyone here would like to say?
Oh, yeah. Sure thing.
So, one question I had was whether this development, because it's a 40R, but does it count for our 40B inventory for the town?
It does.
It does? Okay. Thank you.
Very good. So, again, it's 640. If there's no other comment, nothing else from the petitioner, Mr. President, you're all set?
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I guess I would conclude this public hearing, and then we'll move on to the next steps as they proceed. Thank you very much. Good night. Thank you.
Thank you.